We'll call a meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I invite you to join us.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Strand.
Here.
Garrick.
Here.
Grinberg.
Here.
Pepcorn.
Here.
Mahoney.
Here.
So, the last time I was here, they had a candidate forum, and it was disappointing there wasn't more of the public here. The candidates were here and had great discussion for two and a half hours. So, you guys tonight want to have a short meeting, and we'll see if we can at least match that maybe. On April 28th, the woman's life was saved from both fire and police departments responded to report of an overdose of administered naloxone. Fargo-Cass Public Health has trained and equipped local enforcement agencies with Narcan using funds provided by the state targeted response on the opioid crisis grant. Agencies that received Narcan are the Fargo Police Department, the West Fargo Police Department, NDSU Police, and Cass County Sheriff's Office. Since October, Fargo-Cass Public Health has provided Narcan training to 555 people, including law enforcement schools and area nonprofits. We're doing a much better job, John, don't you think, John?
We are.
Yes, much better job. On May 2nd, the five staff members from the Glass Ray Shelter and Detox Center presented a breakout session at the Seventh Annual White Earth Harm Reduction Summit at Menomon, Minnesota. That summit attracted 600 attendees. Fargo-Cass Public Health coordinated emergency preparedness and response training exercise at Fargo North High on April 27th. The exercise was designed to test the capacity to set up and conduct a point of dispensing operation where medications would be distributed to residents in the event of a public health emergency. More than 100 people participated in the exercise. Mike Redlinger did participate, and he tried to use his Boy Scout identification badge and could not get past security. So, he did help with us. But it was an interesting exercise in which we have to do once in a while, and it shows that we were able to engage in a natural disaster and get proper security in regards to that. There are several interesting engaging programs for residents at all ages at the library this week and next. The annual spring gardening series is off to a great start, with local gardening experts offering tips and techniques for making gardens healthy and beautiful. Sessions are held Tuesday at 7:00 p.m. through May 22nd. On May 13th at 2:00 p.m., the Carson Library will host Crazy Horse family members Floyd Clown and Doug War Eagle, along with author William B. Matson, as they share Matson's book Crazy Horse: A Lakota Warrior's Life and Legend or Legacy, which tells the unique story and history of a legendary leader. Teens will have another opportunity to make up diffuser necklaces for Mother's Day on Tuesday, starting at 4:00 p.m. at the Carson Library. Lot of things going on. In planning, we always got to figure out what's going on in apartments, and the vacancy rate in apartment continues between 9% and 10%. There was a significant change in downtown vacancy rates, however, declining from 9.68% to 7.28%. The highest vacancy rate continues to be in southwest Fargo. Vacancy rate has increased to 14.45%. The majority of new apartments are in southwest Fargo, and it takes time to rent the units. Inspection Department has permitted two apartment buildings of 98 units for the first four months of this year. We continue to see that go down as far as how many apartments are coming into the metro area. Hey, this is a big day in cleanup. This is Cleanup Week in the metro area. The annual event cleans our cities by giving residents an opportunity to dispose of tires, appliances, and other large items at no charge on their regular garbage pickup day. A complete list of do's and don'ts can be found at the city of Fargo website or at the cleanupweek.com. Mr. Garrick had the question, can you put mattresses out there? Yes, you can. Bruce Scrub says you just can't tear apart your garage and put it on the boulevard. I think I got it right. And relocation website, movebudhock.com, has ranked Fargo as its one most popular places to relocate in the United States. Their study looked at thousands of searches done on the site to see which cities and towns in the U.S. are being searched for relocation destiny. In 100 of the 200,000, in 100 to 200,000 population category, Fargo ranked as the top 25 most searched cities. And it's just up to the commissioners to make sure they stick once they get here, right, guys? Okay. Today, we had an interesting display in the lobby. I think you can go out and take a look at that. We had the presence of the NDSU Senior Architect Students, Senator Professor David Crutchfield were out there showing what we'd like to do. Based on the GO-2030 master plan, the exhibit anticipates exciting urban design proposals for the city of Fargo. The students created a variety of models, team reports, individual presentation boards that present an exciting vision for Fargo in the year 2050. Common developmental themes include public transit nodes, increasing density, and health-oriented walkable, bikeable, mixed-use communities. All the great ideas for improving our growing community. Congratulate all those graduating with their bachelor's degree, and most of them are going to continue on to get a master's program. The only thing is, they didn't have a budget for me. All of their projects cost well over $300 million, and I'm not quite sure if we could pull that from the general fund. But we're going to have the students stand up, just like we have everybody else do in this room. So, I'll just call your name. If you kindly stand up, we can then give applause at the end. So, Joe Baki, Tyler Bassett, Emily Feigley, Connor Grant, Healy Heitzman, Mitch Nagel, Austin Stokki. And we also have two students that are from Belgium, Charles Van Oost and Florence De Hain. And David, you want to stand up as well? Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you very much for coming today, and there's some nice visions we have out there. We'll see if some of the commissioners take you apart later. So, okay. So, we'll move on. Is there a motion to approve the order of agenda?
I'll move.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Madam, Mr. Chair, wasn't there a request to pull item number one?
Was there a request?
Maybe I misunderstood, I thought. Okay, sorry.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes, April 23rd, 2018?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any changes, corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda, items one through 20?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Garrick.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Here.
Strand.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Regular agenda. State Water Commission requests cost reimbursement for FM diversion flood project costs. Costs are totaling $7,127. And Steve Sprague's going to explain it, because it's not a lot of money. Is that right?
That's it, yeah. Kent must have felt safe leaving me in charge on this one.
Okay.
$7,127, that's the city contribution or request. And then we have the second request for OXPO, which is the $31,576. And so, it's the same process that we've had in the past.
I'll move 21A.
Second. First and seconded, roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Strand.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Do we have a motion for 20A and B?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Strand.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
No.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Item 22, receive and file ordinance amendment section 25, 1509-2, Article 2515 of Chapter 25 of the Fargo Municipal Code relating to alcohol beverages. Nancy Morris is to explain, and then the chief is available for questions. Is that correct?
That's correct. Generally, this would be something that would be on the consent agenda, but we did have a discussion at the last meeting that changes that are putting a little bit more teeth into the ordinances regarding liquor would be presented to you, and that is what is presented to you today. The ordinance, as it presently states, provides that a corroborating witness would be necessary in order to have an impact on the liquor license holders' sales, and that requirement is being removed at the request of the chief.
Chief Todd, do you want to make a comment?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I asked for this change. This ordinance went into effect back when Chief Magnus was here, and it was to deal with over-serving or serving intoxicated people in establishments. And at that time, when the ordinance was written, the ordinance required a corroborating witness independent of the police department, somebody that was willing to cooperate with our investigation and make corroborating statements. And we don't have that requirement for any other ordinance that we have for the city. It doesn't change the burden of proof here in the facts and circumstances. We still have to conduct the investigation and show that this person was intoxicated as described in this ordinance, what intoxication is, and that the liquor establishment was serving.
Mr. Garrick.
And it needs to be witnessed by the police officer.
Yeah, you answered my first question there, and that was a concern of mine, to change it and loosen it up for your discretion, I guess. But knowing that no other ordinance requires that, kind of puts me at ease more than I was when I first heard this change. My second question is, is there a test, like a sobriety test of any kind? Like, if I were to get pulled over, like that kind of test? Or is it just?
Well, we certainly do have sobriety tests, but the ordinance spells out in detail what intoxication is, including balance or maintaining balance, stumbling, staggering, ineffective muscular coordination, disorientation, mental confusion, unusual or distorted speech, slurred speech, bloodshot, glassy eyes, and so on. It's pretty extensive as far as the description.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious, Chief Todd, have we had any feedback or pushback from the industry regarding this potential change?
You know, not, I've had some questions. I haven't really had pushback on the change. We announced it at, kind of threw it out there at our liquor control meetings, and I had a couple of questions afterwards, but I haven't seen any resistance to it to this point.
Is it safe to assume they know this is on our agenda tonight?
We told them that it would be on it, and we actually voted as liquor control to forward it to the city commission. And with every liquor control meeting, we have a number of license holders that attend those meetings.
Thank you. I will continue, if I might. I have heard from citizens who are encouraging our endorsement of this change, but I haven't heard from the industry, so.
Well, I've heard from both, John, and most people want it, because then it allows the officer not to look for a corroborated witness, and that makes it harder to the bar owners. And I think Commissioner Pepcorn, you've talked about stepping up enforcement in the bars, so I think the police officers have to have a lot of to do that.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask? So, Chief, can you just describe to us, in the real world, what will this change, and how will it benefit the citizens of Fargo?
Well, I think it makes the ordinance more usable. It doesn't, certainly, if we can get a corroborating witness that's willing to cooperate with the investigation, that's always beneficial to the investigation. But like I said, it's not required in any ordinance. And a lot of times, when we're in establishments and we are taking enforcement action, whatever that enforcement action might be, that people are hesitant to get involved in police investigations because they know there's a chance they're going to have to go to court, they may have to testify, their statement's going to be certainly questioned. This allows us to continue on with the investigation, whether we have a corroborating witness or not. It makes the ordinance more usable. It has not been a very usable ordinance up to this point.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. A question I have is, what's receive and file mean exactly? Does it enact the ordinance, or do we have other stages?
Eric, do you want to complain, or Nancy?
Sure. Yeah, the ordinance approval process contemplates three steps, and the first one is just receiving and filing the thing presumably maybe for people to think about it, to receive any comments from the public. The next step will be first reading, which will happen in two weeks, and then second reading and final passage.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, the one thing, John, I think you're always concerned, and we make sure people have an opportunity to know, so the one thing we could do is, instead of putting this on the consent agenda, the next step, we can also put that on the regular agenda, just so people know they have an opportunity to comment. Does that make sense?
That's great. But you wouldn't necessarily have to, because it's following protocol, as we do now.
No, correct, but it's just another opportunity. It would just be, it'll be back on the agenda, and then if anybody wants to come and comment, then they still could. Isn't that correct, Eric? I mean, that.
Yeah, absolutely. Anything can be on the regular.
Starting to sound like an attorney. Can I have a motion?
I advanced the recommended motion.
There's a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
So, Mr. Chairman, can we just notate that, that we would put it on the regular agenda instead of on the consent agenda? That's all. Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Strand.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Item, public hearing, Renaissance Zone Project for Ruby Rules LLC for Rehabilitation Project Located at 324 Fourth Street North. Nicole Crutchfield to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, you have, the city received a Renaissance Zone application from Ruby Rules LLC to rehabilitate the existing commercial office building at 321 Fourth Street North. The application proposes to complete interior renovations to the existing commercial office building, and the building is basically one level, 5,781 square feet, and the rehabilitation would renovate and update the building with significant capital costs relating to minor exterior structural alterations, interior concrete floors, window replacements, roof replacement, and a replacement of HVAC, plumbing, and electrical systems. And the construction would tentatively begin in the summer of 2018 with a goal of completion in the fall. This would be potentially the future house of a dental office and yoga studio. And so, the Renaissance Zone Authority did recommend unanimous approval April 25th. All the state and local regulations have been met, and we recommend approval.
Mr. Chair, can I add a quick comment?
Yes.
So, it's currently the home of the Assessors' Office, and Ben Hushka isn't here tonight, but he would strongly urge a no vote, because he loves that building, and he would rather stay there than move. I think most of the other staff already are aware of that. It's a really nice building. They are going to keep the, it's some unique architecture, and they are going to keep the integrity of the building. So, like I said, it was unanimous vote, and I'll make a motion to approve.
First, I have to have public comments. Sorry, dude.
Sorry.
Is anyone present who wishes to speak to this Renaissance Zone project? Is anyone who wishes to speak? We'll close the public hearing, and then Commissioner Pepcorn can give his motion.
I saw moved.
Second.
Second. Any further? Commissioner Grinberg.
How many in the room know that this building used to be the location for the Chamber of Commerce? I only see one hand.
I almost mentioned that as part of the presentation.
It's always nice to have an older guy. A long, long time ago. It's great that we see downtown, it was being redone. I mean, it's really fun to see that, that it's not going to be torn down, and something else can come in its place. It would be hard to have another block eight or something like there, but that'd be great. Okay, any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Garrick.
No.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Resolution approving plat of the Cityscapes Business Park, quitclaim deed by Bolinger Enterprises, L.L.P. Donald Cress to explain.
Good evening, Commissioners. Donald Cress of the Department of Planning and Development. Item 24 is a minor plat for the Cityscapes Business Park Edition, which, as you see, is located here. This is 1901 First Avenue North. This is First Avenue North here, railroad tracks, Main Avenue. Ordinarily, a minor plat would be on the consent agenda, but this one is before you today, as it includes a subdivision waiver, and it also associated with this project is a quitclaim deed from the city to the current property owner. The plat proposes one lot, one block subdivision of the property along First Avenue North. This plat incorporates numerous smaller properties into one large lot for future commercial development. Property is owned LI Limited Industrial. No zone changes proposed. County drain, number 10, runs through this property. The drain, which was an open ditch until the 1970s, is now piped underground in two six-foot diameter concrete pipes. The Land Development Code requires 175-foot setback from the center line of a drain, so 350 feet total, 175 feet per side, again, from the drain's center line. However, as this drain is now piped underground and is not expected to return to the open ditch configuration, the applicant has requested a subdivision waiver to reduce the required drain setback. The applicant worked with city staff to determine the appropriate width for the drain setback, as some area is still required for future maintenance of the stormwater pipes, if you need to go in there and replace them or fix them. It was determined by the city engineer that 35-foot wide setback from the drain center line, 70-foot total, would be sufficient for this, and that is indicated in this, right here on the plat. That setback is indicated there. Additionally, the applicant's title to this property was complicated by the fact that an area of city-owned property was included in the overall property. The city acquired this piece through a tax default in the 1960s. Again, the applicant and his attorney worked with city staff to resolve this matter. The city attorney has prepared a quitclaim deed to the property owner, which is included in your packet. Your commission's approval of this deed is included in the recommendation. The applicant's representative, Rick Flaxgarth of Cityscapes Development, is with us tonight and may wish to address the commission. And staff would also like to recognize the cooperation of the Southeast Cass Water Resource District in helping us resolve this matter. The staff's and the planning commission's recommendation is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Donald. Anybody present who wishes to speak on this? Close hearing, do I have a?
I'll move for approval.
Grinberg, is there a second?
Second.
Garrick, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just add that there was a lot of detailed work that went into this with our fine staff, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Rick Flaxgarth. There was, it took some time because of the records, and the things didn't connect the dots. I think some of our staff spent hours in the basement of the Cass County Courthouse trying to find documents that tied all this together.
Yes, sir. I believe our surveyor and city engineering staff did quite a.
So, this is good work. Appreciate the developers' patience to get this right, and it'd be exciting for this area to be developed.
Miss Flat Spaces, it'll be fantastic, more in growth within the city. Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question about emergency preparedness with the tracks so near, and of course, we don't have as many oil trains barreling through town as we had, but are there or were there from our departments any concerns about the proximity to those tracks?
I don't believe any comments were included in the staff report. Commissioner Strand, I don't know if Chief has something on that?
Chief Dirksen, he always makes comments, right?
I don't always make comments. Good morning, or good evening, Commissioner. I think it's morning, I don't know. But, you know, for me, I'm always an opponent of any housing developments along railroad tracks, realizing that the tracks have been here a long time. The chemicals and things that are transported up and down these rail lines, we're putting people when they're in their most vulnerable state, when they're sleeping or at home, you know, their senses aren't as heightened. So, I've never been a proponent, and I won't be a proponent, of having living quarters within a close proximity of the railroad tracks. I've spoken about this since, for the last six years, so I'm consistent in that manner. So, if you had any other further questions.
Commissioners, let me clarify. This is intended for commercial and light industrial development, so no housing.
There's no apartments going on.
No housing is intended here.
Very good. Any other questions, Commissioner? John, are you okay?
I am.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Strand.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
No.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Finally, presentation of Drain 27 Improvement. Bruce Scrub to explain.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The purpose of this item being placed on the agenda tonight is to meet the public comment requirements of the drinking water SRF loan program in North Dakota. We recently submitted an application to the North Dakota Department of Health for a drinking water SRF loan to finance some regional water infrastructure improvements that we have planned. And a new requirement of receiving SRF loan financing is to provide the public with an opportunity to comment on the use of those loan proceeds. And so, that's why we're here tonight. We've got a presentation that'll focus essentially on two areas, one being what we're calling the Drain 27 Improvement Project. It's essentially an existing channel located between the Cheyenne River and Drain 27 that we would like to improve, so that that channel will be used in a dual-purpose sort of scenario, both drainage and flood control, as well as water supply. And then, as long as we were doing this tonight, we thought, related to this, we'd like to talk a little bit about the Red River Valley Water Supply Project, and specifically, our permit for water on the Cheyenne River, that I hope you find informative and interesting. The presentation tonight is brief. We've only got about 19 slides, but what we'd like to try and cover, of course, is the Drain 27 Improvement Project. Also like to take the opportunity to provide a little bit of history about water treatment in the city of Fargo. We would like to talk a little bit about what we're projecting for future regional water demands for our water system. And then, take a little bit of time to talk about the three permits that we have for surface water today. One on the Red River, one on the Cheyenne River, and one for stored water in Lake Ashtabula. We'll finish up with our strategy for requesting an additional allocation for water on the Cheyenne River, and then we'll conclude and open it up for discussions or comment. So first, the purpose of us being on the agenda tonight, it's the Drain 27 Conveyance Improvement Project. As I mentioned, a new requirement of the drinking water SRF program in the state of North Dakota is to provide the public with an opportunity to comment on the intended use of the loan proceeds. So I'd like to go through some of the specifics of that project. This slide, if you look at the right-hand portion of the slide, this is an aerial view of the Drain 27 service area. The channel is shown on the lower left-hand portion of that slide, a red box. The channel basically connects the Cheyenne River to Drain 27. The improvements to the channel will essentially involve a widening of that channel to add capacity to it, so that it can serve that dual purpose, both for drainage purposes and water supply purposes. Incidentally, one of the other driving forces behind this project, from a timing perspective, in 2019, there are plans to rebuild 52nd Avenue South.
Just to step back for a minute, Mr. Chairman, a question. Prior slide, Bruce, if you can. So, just as I understand this correctly, you would be, under this proposal, this would be widened so that the supply for Red River Valley Water Supply would come through Drain 27 into the Red River?
Yes, that's correct. The other option?
Is it the, this doesn't seem that that drain is sufficient enough to handle any water supply for, you know?
Drain 27, surprisingly, and Steve will get into our nomination for water, regional water supply, but you'd be surprised, the open channel capacity, it's got far more capacity for the Red River Valley Water Supply Project for our needs than we need. Yeah.
So, given the concerns of prior discussions on flood protection and buyouts and preservation of, you know, the natural vegetation, et cetera, what would the long-term consequences of, maybe I'm getting into the weeds here, we can have it offline, but I just find it interesting.
Well, of course, during the flood supply, or flooding situation, emergency, drought water supply from the Missouri River isn't a need. When we would use that for water supply, conveyance would be under a 1930s-type drought scenario when we're receiving Missouri River water, and Drain 27 is essentially empty. Yeah.
We have an option to draw from the Red or the Cheyenne. This is our shortcut to the Cheyenne, basically.
Yeah, and one of the other things that factored into this, Commissioner, originally, we looked at a direct pipeline connection of the size needed to meet the regional water[1678.26] we looked at a direct pipeline connection of the size needed to meet the regional water supply needs, all the way from the Cheyenne River to the water treatment plant, at about $50 million, and we can do this, utilize existing infrastructure for about six. Thought, but we'd be happy to talk about the capacities of the channels and those things.
Doesn't displace the golf course, does it?
Nope, 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 nope. But thank you. This is a close-up aerial view of the project area, and the dual-purpose nature of this project makes it somewhat unique. The various components of the project have been phased based on time sensitivity of their need. So, the project currently is phased to occur in, in three parts, three phases. Phase one in 2018, this year, which would include a regional detention pond, the actual drainage channel improvements, and a flood control lift station at, at the drain, Drain 27. So, that work is shown on blue on this slide. Phase two in 2019 would be a new water supply pumping station and pipeline connection to the regional detention pond, that's shown in red on this slide. And then finally, phase three in 2020, which would be a new pipeline connection from the Cheyenne River intakes to that new pump station, that's shown on green on this slide. We've also shown the potential for a future phase four at some point, based on what we're seeing for regional water demand needs. But three phases anticipated at this point. This is a slide that shows the private property impacts of that channel widening. The private property is all located on the north side of the channel. The city owns the property along the south side of the channel. A preliminary design was done, and after taking some input from the private property owners, the engineers were able to make some modifications to minimize the private property impacts. My understanding is the engineers have now been out and met with each of those private property owners, and we've been able to address the concerns. What we kind of like about this project is its unique nature in that the city will reserve a dual benefit from this project, both drainage, flood control benefits, as well as water supply benefits. As I mentioned just a little bit ago, considerable cost savings versus trying to bury a dedicated pipeline all the way from the Cheyenne River to the water plant. This is the part I kind of like, this will bore most of you, but I really enjoy history. So, I wanted to take you through a pretty busy slide, but if you follow this from left to right, it's kind of an interesting history on water treatment in Fargo. It actually dates back to 1912, when Fargo built its first water treatment plant. As you know, with $120 million water plant expansions, technology has really changed since then. Oh, excuse me. Proceeding from left to right, Fargo got its first permit for water on the Red River back in 1957, at the same time that Bald Hill Dam was being constructed just north of Valley City, which created Lake Ashtabula. The purpose of constructing Bald Hill Dam was for both flood protection and water supply. Then continuing to the right, in 1963, the State Water Commission approved a permit for water, for stored water in Lake Ashtabula. And the reason that we got that back at that time was in exchange for our contribution to the construction of Bald Hill Dam, Fargo's contribution. Then in the mid-'70s, the city installed some pumps at the Cheyenne River for the purpose of withdrawing Lake Ashtabula water when it was flowing past us. The permit for stored water in Lake Ashtabula still exists today, but it's for supplemental needs when water supplies on the Red River are inadequate to meet our needs. That was followed in the mid-'80s by installation of an actual pumping station at the Cheyenne River and a dedicated pipeline that runs all the way to the water treatment plant. That pipe still exists today, but unfortunately does not have sufficient capacity to meet our future regional water needs as part of the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. In 1993, the State Water Commission approved a permit on the Cheyenne River for natural flows in the Cheyenne, in other words, non-Lake Ashtabula water. That was followed by the city constructing a new water treatment plant in the mid-'90s. Began operating in 1997, still operates today, obviously. In the mid-2000s, this is where things get interesting. The city entered a water service agreement with the Cass Royal Water Users District, and we became a regional provider. Part of the reason that we did that at that time was much of Fargo's future growth to the south would occur in the Cass Royal Water Users Service Territory. In 2014, as you know, we began construction on the expansion of our water treatment plant, although utilizing more advanced technologies. As a matter of fact, we're expand, that expansion is 15 million gallons per day. That allows us to treat now a total of 45 million gallons per day. The expansion involves ultrafiltration and reverse osmosis membranes, so it's cutting-edge technology for today. And then in 2016, Fargo entered a water service agreement with the city of West Fargo, which really expanded our regional service territory. So, very happy about all of that, and I'm sorry about this history, but I really enjoy this kind of stuff. As you're likely aware, the city of Fargo has been a member of the Lake Agassay Water Authority, LAWA, since its legislative establishment back in the '90s. LAWA was originally comprised of members representing the thirteen easternmost counties in North Dakota. Its membership has now grown to include members from central North Dakota as well. LAWA is the local sponsor for the Red River Valley Water Supply Project, which is a state and local project to bring Missouri River water to central North Dakota and eastern North Dakota. Over the years, a whole bunch of studies have been done looking for reliable water supplies in the state of North Dakota during a 1930s-type drought scenario, and the Missouri River has been identified as the only reliable source under those type of conditions. So, the current plan that Steve will talk about in a little bit, for the Red River Valley Water Supply Project is to bring Missouri River water to central and eastern North Dakota through a pipeline, essentially following the Highway 200 corridor alignment, and then ultimately put the water into Lake Ashtabula and the Cheyenne River, thus getting it to the Red River. So, at this point, I'd like to ask Steve to assist her a little bit, speak about the Red River Valley Water Supply Project and the immediate and long-term needs, which is why we're here to talk about our Cheyenne River permit tonight. Also, how these Drain 27 improvements will help that Red River Valley Water Supply Project, providing us with a conveyance mechanism. We started to work with AE2S back in the mid-2000s. They helped us on the utility side with efforts in the area of long-term master planning, capital improvements planning, financial modeling, and helping us with our three permits that we'll talk about tonight. And then AE2S has also been serving as the engineer for the Red River Valley Water Supply Project, so Steve has spent a lot of time meeting with all of the potential water users along the corridor and extending quite far out. So, helping all water systems try to predict what their need will be, because our planning horizon for that project goes out to 2075. So, Steve, if you could help out, I appreciate that.
Mayor Mahoney, members of the commission, thanks for the opportunity to present this evening. As I talk about the information that Bruce wanted me to convey to you this evening, it's going to be a lot of discussion about water, and water in terms of a volume over unit time. And when you go get water from the Water Commission, on an annual basis, they measure that in acre-feet. When you look at the peak withdrawal that the Water Commission wants you to bring from the, from the river, they have that in cubic feet per second. And then, when you, when we talk about the water plant, we're more familiar with talking about million gallons per day. And what I'd like to do is, is try to bring everything to million gallons per day, just to stay on a consistent platform. But if you wanted some perspective, an acre-feet of water is just like it sounds, it's one foot of water standing over an acre. And for a visual perspective, if you went to the, to the NDSU Bison Football Field, 90 acres of football field with one foot of water would be an acre-foot. So, that gives you some perspective.
You could have put national champions? I know you went to UND, but maybe national champions on that?
This was the best I could do, Mayor. And then you can see some of the other comparisons there. There's 43,560 cubic feet in an acre-foot, and then about 326,000 gallons, so it gives you some perspective. They were dealing with some very large amounts of water as we worked through this presentation. This is a relatively busy graphic, but I'll bring it into perspective. It's time on the horizontal axis and million gallons per day of water on the vertical axis. The blue bars are your actual average day that you've used over time, and you can see, as you'd expect, as your population's grown, your water demand has also grown with a pretty significant jump recently as you've added West Fargo to your service area. The red then, combined with the blue, is your peak day, and you'll see that that bounces around a little bit more. That's because that has to do primarily with outdoor water use. So, in a real wet year, that doesn't jump as much as it would in a dry year. And so, you can see that the change in that, like the late '80s were very significant, you had some dry time around 2005. And then more recently, a lot of that jump is due to some dry weather, and then also, again, adding West Fargo to the mix. What we've done as part of the Red River Valley Water Supply Project, and your participation in it, is look out to a long-term planning horizon of 2075, so about seven more years for construction, coupled with another 50-year planning horizon. We've taken various population projections that exist and extrapolated them out to that long-term planning horizon, and then looked at average day water use and peak day water use dynamics within the city of Fargo. And if we can do that, the blue band that you see, which in 20, in 2075 ranges somewhere between 50 million gallons per day and 70 million gallons per day, would be your average. And you can see that your average last year was about 16 MGD, so you'd see that type of growth in the next 57 years. And then, your peak has been about 1.7 to 2. We felt it was quite aggressive to try to peak the 70s, so we focused on the 50, and that would give us a peak day capacity of 85 to 100 million gallons per day. That compares to the horizontal lines that Bruce described, your current water plant is 30 million gallons per day. With the new expansion, it'll be 45 million gallons per day. And just to bring things into perspective, the 30-inch line from the Cheyenne River to the water plant can only handle 16.2 million gallons per day, and so that's one of the main thrusts of our, of our conversation this, this evening. Moving then from the history to some of our current permitted appropriations, the city of Fargo is blessed with three different water appropriations happening in 1957, 1963, and 1993. Your water plant is interesting, was constructed so much earlier, but you really didn't have a legal permit from the Water Commission until 1957. And you have the ability to take 109,500 acre-feet per year at a maximum withdrawal rate of 150 CFS, and we've provided in parentheses the equivalent MGD, so about 98 MGD and 98, 97 MGD. So, those, there's a reason why those two numbers are so close, and that's for your municipal supply on the Red River. North Dakota Water Law is a first-in-time, first-to-right, first-to-right or Western Water Law, and you're the number four permitty on the Red River. So, you have a very high seniority in terms of that. Drayton, small Drayton, North Dakota, happens to be three. The other two are small irrigators, and Grand Forks happens to be number seven. So, in terms of major water use, that Red River permit is a very valuable one. When the 1930s happened, and this kind of shows, I guess, how long it takes to do things in the public sector, they recognized that that, there was not a sustainable supply in Fargo. And so, when Lake Ashtabula and Bald Hill Dam were built north of Valley City on the Cheyenne River, they were built both for flood control and for water supply. And water supply purposes like that in North Dakota are somewhat unusual. But you do have 30, about 36,000 acre-feet that can be withdrawn at 54 CFS, or somewhere between 32 and 35 MGD that you have stored behind Lake Ashtabula. You would, in, in terms of using that, if you ran out of water in the red and you were to turn to the Cheyenne and the Cheyenne was insufficient, you would ask the, the Water Commission in turn, who would ask the Corps of Engineers to open the dam and discharge water from Bald Hill Dam, flowing down the Cheyenne River through Lisbon, up through, and it would hit that existing intake that you have, that draws water from the Cheyenne River. And then, more recently, you recognize that it was probably foolish not to take advantage of a lot of supply in the Cheyenne River when it was available. So, in 1993, you got a permit on the Cheyenne River to withdraw up to 6.2 MGD of water long-term at a peak withdrawal rate of 16.2 million gallons per day, which is that pipeline size that I explained earlier. That one does have conditions on it. The permit actually reads that you can take 50 CFS, as long as there's 25 CFS flowing downstream. We have asked for some clarification on that, and they'll give you any number over 25, up to 50, is the way they're interpreting that. So, you have about, somewhere between 0 and 25 CFS of capacity on the Cheyenne River of natural flows, in the event that there's enough water for that to take place. The other, when you look at all three of those things, one of the disconcerting parts of that is if you went back to the 1930s, models have shown that none of those three supplies would be available and sufficient to meet a 1930s drought if they were to happen again, given your current demands or your long-term planning demands. And so Fargo has known for years that it needed to do something to secure a long-term supplemental water supply for drought protection. And Bruce stole my thunder a little bit, but this is the project that's currently being looked at. On the far-left side of the graphic, there'd be an intake on the Missouri River. Right now, there's what, there's planned to be a 72-inch pipeline that would come from the Missouri River all the way along that blue and green corridor, and ultimately discharge into the Cheyenne River, or into, which would flow into Lake Ashtabula. So, now you'd have an intake on the Red River for your primary supply historically, and you'd have three permits eventually on the, on the Cheyenne River, all to access either the natural flows in the Cheyenne, water stored in Lake Ashtabula, or water that's conveyed by the Red River Valley Water Supply Project into Lake Ashtabula. As we look at this project, it was recognized that, that as we looked at 16.2 million gallons per day of capacity from the Cheyenne River to our existing water plant, that that was going to be woefully inadequate long-term, as I showed you some of those planning numbers that we had. And so, as the project came up to improve Drain 27, it was recognized that there was a neat opportunity here to bring some extra water in, in events when it's dry. So, we wouldn't be putting water ever into the Drain 27 during wet periods, because we'd have natural flows from other sources. But during extreme droughts, we would use the capacity in that drain to simultaneously have it be a storm control project, as well as a water supply project. To your question, Commissioner Grinberg, the capacity of the channel is 260 cubic feet per second, or CFS. We're only proposing through this project to ever put 120 of water supply into it, so there'd always be 150 CFS of extra capacity.
Mr. Chairman, thanks, Steve. Can you put it in a sense of scale, when the water hits the river, is it, in a fill... I mean, I look at the Red River, and it's significant, and I see this Drain 27 coming in, I'm trying to figure out how much water would come through that channel to get to the river to feed the water treatment plant, or is...
Just what, will the channel be full, or will it be halfway full?
I'm just trying to get a sense of scale.
Because of your low-head dam that you have downtown, any water flowing in the Red River will create the same pool.
Okay.
So, you'll never see a pool difference, it'll just be how much water is going over that.
That dam then would hold back the water that would coming through that 27?
That's why that dam is there. That dam, when you, when people try to take it out, because of fish passage, you elected to put the rocks in, because you need that dam. That low-head dam was designed specifically to hold water back, so your intake stream would always be submerged. And so, as long as there's any water flowing in that river, you'll be able to use it, and you could actually draw down that pool a little bit if you had to. It's hard, the river typically runs somewhere, when I look at the red in Fargo, somewhere between 300 and 900 cubic feet per second. So, if we were running 120 through there, it would be definitely on the low, low end of what you'd see in the Red River, even through any history that you've seen on the river.
You remember before it had rocks, right, Tony?
If you look at, the reason that I'm going to recommend ultimately an additional appropriation, there's a series of them. Ten state standards are a standard that the North Dakota Department of Health looks at for meeting water supply, and they do recommend that you have sufficient water from multiple sources to meet your maximum peak day demands. And so, in your case, you have that with the way that you, things are configured to a degree, but if you, the Cheyenne River at this point is inadequate if we had to go from the red to Cheyenne. In addition to drought, you also use the Cheyenne River strategically. If you have challenging water quality in the Red River, sometimes taste and odor, for instance, that can be pretty overwhelming. If that's heard from downstream, upstream users, you'll switch over strategically to the Cheyenne River to avoid dealing with that taste and odor. In addition, and this is getting into the weeds as the term was used earlier, some of the hardness that you have mandates putting soda ash in the water. Soda ash is one of the most expensive chemicals that you have, and so a lot of times what plants will do when they have a robust supply from two different directions is they'll actually have the computer system calculate consistently what the most economical blend of river water qualities are, and you can actually treat the lowest, down to the lowest denominator then in treating water. And then, as Bruce mentioned earlier, you already have a very significant investment in your Red River intake and 45 MGD of capacity down there. There was some discussion, long-term, of looking at a satellite plant, but prior to making that investment, it would be very strategic to have additional supply flowing past the Red River intake, instead of trying to use a pipeline to convey that, or have that be trapped in the Cheyenne River. So, what we're recommending is that 70 MGD was the high end of the average day that we looked at for you, which equates to 78,800 acre-feet. And then, 100 MGD was the high end of the peak instantaneous withdrawal rate that you would have, which equates to 155 CFS. And so, if you take the recommendation of ourselves and staff, we would look at recommending that you apply for a new permit on the Cheyenne River. It would be a junior permit, it would likely be held to the same standards of having some other minimum flows, so there would be times when you couldn't use it, when there was low flows in the Cheyenne River. But this would allow you to have the same 2075 planning horizon water on the Red River as you have on the Cheyenne River. In looking at doing that, we do want to cooperate with the Water Commission. We're almost certain they'll want you to subtract the junior permit that you have in 1993 on the, on the Cheyenne River, so that would provide a net app... on the Cheyenne River, so that would provide a net ask of 71,800 acre-feet. We do, however, want to have the luxury, if the water's there, to go at the peak capacity of your treatment infrastructure. So we recommend maintaining the 155. In addition, your current permit on the Cheyenne recognizes that ultimately that Cheyenne flows into the Red and becomes the same system, which then flows downstream to other users. And so the Water Commission has a condition where your combined usage can't exceed 109,500. Because we're asking for a lower number than that, it's our recommendation that you would agree with a similar concession for this permit if they so ask because it's a much more flexible and much more robust scenario than potentially having them seek reductions on your Red River permit, which I do not think would be in your best interest as a senior withdrawal, a senior permit holder. We're recommending no modification to your Red River permit at this time. And we're recommending no modifications to your Lake Ash T'Beulah permit at this time. And so a typical scenario under good water quality and high volumes would be to continue to use the Red. In the event that the Red was either problematic from a quality standpoint or short on storage or short on capacity, we'd recommend going to the two permits that you will now have on the Cheyenne, the one from 1993 and the new one that you apply for. And then the event that there's not enough water there, we would recommend looking at the strategy and economics of either using the water that you have stored in Bald Hill Dam or if the Red River Valley Water Supply Project is available, turning to that project as your supplemental backup supply once constructed. To complicate things, whenever the Devil's Lake Outlets are pumped, you also have that supply coming by the city's door. This additional permit would be different than that. But right now, with the improvements you're doing to your treatment plant, you can also treat those emergency discharges from the Devil's Lake Outlet. So that's another supply that we didn't talk about extensively tonight. Just two slides left in terms of conclusions. I'll handle one and Bruce will handle the other. We do feel that multiple water supply sources are very critical, both from a drought, all from a drought contamination and redundancy flexibility standpoint. The Cheyenne River and Lake Ash T'Beulah are vital components of your water supply plan. And we recommend moving forward with a total allocated amount permit of 78,800 acre-feet per year and a peak withdrawal rate of 155 CFS so that you have complete 100% redundancy between your Red River supply and your Cheyenne River supply.
Thank you, Steve. Well, that's it. This was intended to be informational for the commission tonight. By virtue of giving a public presentation, we meet the public comment requirements of the Drinking Water SRF loan program. And then the Red River Valley Water Supply Project work still on goes. I thought it was a great opportunity to update the commission on that as well as the permit negotiations on the Cheyenne River that we'll get started with soon. The actual permit application, I'm assuming, will come back to you probably through the Utility Committee up to the City Commission to submit the application for a new permit on the Cheyenne River. So this is informational tonight. Hope you enjoyed it as much as I did.
Bruce, good presentation with you and Steve. But I do have a question. We're going to ask for increasing permitted on the Red River Valley Water Supply. They ask you to elect how much water you want. Oftentimes, that's also tied to us funding part of that. Does this change the amount that we've asked for allocation for Fargo?
This would not.
It would stay the same.
My understanding through Steve is Missouri River water, if it ever shows up here, would be permitted independently from this.
Independently. Second question, Steve sent you from the Grand Forks area. Would there be any reason that Grand Forks would object to us to draw this amount of water?
Mayor, I guess obviously that would be speculation. But because you already have the ability to use 109,500 acre-feet and because this is subject to that total usage amount and because this would be junior to their ability to use on the Red River, I do not see that they would be challenged.
Commissioner Grinberg. Questions, Steve? I know we've been in discussions on this for years in a different capacity on my side. Is the present plan then to draw water out of the Missouri out of aquifers underground?
So Commissioner Grinberg, the presentation as presented today, the primary project is to try to pull water out of the Missouri River using a conventional intake. Even though the project is attempting to limit to all practical extent the federal nexus, there is a nationwide permit that exists by the Corps of Engineers to do routine intake infrastructure. In working with national and local legal counsel, the costs of constructing a robust, a high-capacity intake on the Missouri were significantly less than those horizontal collector wells. And so at this point in time, the primary project is seeking to use the Missouri River using a conventional intake, much like the one you have on the Red.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, my whole adult life, we've anticipated maybe getting water from the Missouri, but it's never happened. If this doesn't happen, is this even more necessary? If we don't have access to the Missouri River? Or is this still viable entirely if we have a 1930s drought situation without water from the Missouri?
Commissioner Strand, I think they're really mutually exclusive. And the reason I say that is we're really applying for a high-volume, high-capacity permit on the Cheyenne River when there's high flows on the Cheyenne. And so in the event that that doesn't exist, you'd be looking at your other supplies that you already have in hand. And so this is really more of a strategy when things are going well to take advantage of the supplies that are there. When we get into a drought situation, this permit would likely be non-accessible because you'd be so junior that they'd be looking to the more senior users on the Cheyenne River at that time. You know, a follow-up question may be, if we don't get Missouri River, what else could we do? You know, I think we've worked with you over the last couple decades to look at a variety of more expensive, smaller approaches to cobbling together water supply, maybe seeking groundwater where it is available in far reaches, 50 miles more from the city of Fargo. There's been talk of aquifer storage and recovery, both on its own as well as in conjunction with the Red River Valley Water Supply Project, given that you now serve West Fargo. Working with West Fargo on the West Fargo Aquifer has more potential than it did historically. And so there might be some merit in looking at that even as a complement to the Red River Valley Water Supply Project, as well as a near-term strategy to bank some water if things got really tight. But given the size of the Fargo-Moorhead metro area and given the amount of shortage that's anticipated if a 1930s drought were to recur again, and meteorologists say it's highly likely in the next 50 years, given the statistical evidence that exists historically, the Missouri River is a really important avenue for Fargo.
Commissioner Pepcorn.
I just got a couple of quick questions. So in 88, that's, I mean, a lot of us, you know, the whole, what was the flow of the Red River at that time? I just remember it was not much. Do you remember like a ballpark number? It was not very much, anyway.
I don't. It was a year before I moved back. But I understand in 88 that there was a point where water quit flowing over the dam. However, it was creating a sufficient pool for us to withdraw water from behind the dam, so.
So my question, so the Missouri River, that isn't an issue. I mean, the water supply there, that has never been that low, as far as I know. So to us, I mean, it's a great, that would be a great insurance policy.
So Commissioner Pepcorn, addressing your question a little differently, if you go back to the historical flows on the Missouri River, in the 1930s, the lowest flow on the Missouri River was 13,000 acre-feet as compared to what we're talking about in terms of these.
So from our perspective, it's like the insurance policy there, that's a pretty good insurance policy for the long-term. Okay, I got a couple more.
13,000 CFS, in case they're quoting me. It's CFS, not acre-feet. I confuse myself on my own back and forth. 13,000 CFS was the lowest number.
So can you talk a little bit about the whole thing of, we have to, we're asking for a share of the law-what thing. Can you talk about some of the other participants and how much they're going to be requesting and how much our share is? Do you mind just talking a little bit about that? And how was that, how are they paying for their share and how are we paying for our share?
Continue. Commissioner Pepcorn, that's a big, a lot of moving parts in that question. So historically, the project only served the 13 easternmost counties in North Dakota when it was a federal project. When it became a state-local project, which is the direction that the state's looking at doing now, the state encouraged us to open things up all the way back to the Missouri River. So in 2016, a series of over 100 meetings were conducted where we went out to all of the city commissions for eligible users and all of the rural water district boards that were eligible for service. And the result of that 100 contacts is that 35 different discreet municipalities and water districts signed up for service. And the total nominated capacity is 157.23 cubic feet per second.
So it's 157 about, and so we're about half? Or what's the Fargo?
Some of this is for domestic purposes and some of it's for industrial purposes. And some of it is peak withdrawal versus average. The 157 is on average. If we take yourselves, the urbanized area of Casper Rural Water District, so not the rural groundwater area, but the urbanized area in West Fargo, you represent about 67% of the total capacity of the project.
That's awesome. And just the one more, the key point is that, so the legislature is very much in favor of this because it's not only us, it's a lot of small eastern rural water districts that are going to benefit. And I think that's great news for us because the legislature is very much in support of this, unlike a lot of other things. And I think that's really to our benefit as well.
And to your question on payment, the project is intended to be a split between state grants and then a loan or a bond for the local entities. And then there'd be a cost allocation model for those 35 systems. That's all currently being modeled and ultimately will be negotiated in the 2019 legislative session.
Okay, just two more and then I'll be done. One is, was there a...
You're trying to make this last longer than that short meeting you had. I can tell that.
But is there a maximum for our city that we can request of that amount of water? Was there, is there, are we limited in some way as to how much we can request out of that water?
Now, you're going to test, I've done so well in terms of memory. But Commissioner Pepcorn, the total capacity that you nominated was that 67% of the 157. So we'd have to do the math. That's on average. That water then, that would be, there'd be a pipeline that came across and filled Lake Ash T'Beulah. Lake Ash T'Beulah is a very, very large reservoir. It holds about 70,000 acre-feet of water. And then you would call for releases on that dam, just like you did for your Lake Ash T'Beulah supply. The model considers peak day discharges as high as 350 cubic feet per second out of the dam. So by all practical purposes, as long as everything's working well, it should meet your needs to 2075 and beyond. If at some point you grew beyond what we thought you needed today and we didn't model for, a church is never built really for Christmas and Easter, right? You hear that analogy sometimes. We didn't really look at your water supply project for Christmas and Easter either. We recognized if it got that, the drought got that severe, that you'd likely implement some conservation. You'd likely implement some prudent water rationing so that we didn't build this thing so huge that it was fiscally irresponsible. But should you continue to grow past that, those water supplies that are held by the other users, if they don't grow at the capacity that you do, those are a marketable water right. So your first avenue would be to potentially buy water rights from some of your partners in the project. And then there's also been really, really long-term consideration, and we'll all be, you know, dead and gone, but of a second pipe being constructed from the Missouri River across.
But the big thing is, so our city can grow, but also, let's say that we start serving more and more cities. That's the thing that isn't really in the, and so, and this is my final thing, I promise. This is the biggest thing that all of us sitting here will do, other than the diversion. Because this, and this one, will make us money. And so that's the, this is a very historic thing and we're all fortunate to be here because other than the diversion and flood protection for Fargo, this thing, and my thing is, we want to get as much of that water as we can because that someday will be very valuable. And it's an asset that our ancestors will go, man, those guys might not have looked very smart, but that was a pretty shrewd move. So it's a great thing. Thank you.
Mr. Garrick.
These guys always talk smart and I try to follow along. So I'll dumb it down for everybody else. When he was talking about that, you know, the more you request, the higher the percent of the ask that we take up. It's just dollars. That's all it is. You know what I mean? So I completely understand and I'm 100% for going on and asking for the most that would make sense fiscally, basically. And I think that's where we kind of came down at. I've had a couple of meetings with you guys talking about this stuff. We threw out the really large numbers and then the really conservative numbers. And we kind of found a happy medium here. So I think you guys did a great job of...
The Goldilocks syndrome.
Exactly. You know, we tried to find that happy medium. I think you guys found it. And I think everyone up here is pretty excited to get this thing going. So good job on the presentation.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I know we're not supposed to use words climate change in today's culture. But I think it's accepted information that there are more erratic weather cycles going on. And we can look out and see that across the country and around the world. One of my concerns is, and I agree with Commissioner Pepcorn and I think we all agree that we have to be prepared for both extremes. And a water shortage is imminent if we're not prepared. But for example, if I recall, not that many legislative sessions ago, I want to say it was a Senex-Harvest States project in Jamestown that would have cut off our access to this water had that project been put into fruition. And what, so we have political risks also of other people upstream garnering this water and claiming it before it would come to us. So those are, and then my lifelong observation of the Garrison diversion never coming to us the way it was originally and still intended to do or hope to. So it is prudent that we shore up our resources as early as we can and get our claim on that for this economic engine of this part of the region of the country.
Commissioner Strand, everything you said was spot-on. The only clarification I'll offer is the CHS project that was going to do a big nitrogen fertilizer facility outside of Jamestown by Spiritwood. I don't think the risk was that they were going to preempt us from doing it. They wanted to do two projects, one for them and one for us. And that one seemed to have a higher priority. That project didn't materialize. And for your comfort, the Spiritwood area has a relatively large nomination through Stutzman Rural Water, through the JDA, and through the city of Jamestown to be a user on this project this time. So they're actually a complementary part of this instead of a competing faction.
Steve, just a quick question. That CHS was proposal for the south of the interstate, which was more complex environmentally as well as cost, wasn't it?
Yeah. Commissioner Grinberg, what Tony's talking about is that they were going to try to bring the water from the Missouri River south of Bismarck and bring it across. And the route just got to be a little bit more congested than what we see on Highway 200. And then it didn't have the, is it easy access to Lake Ash T'Beulah? There were just a lot of things that weren't going to be near as good for the city of Fargo. By combining everybody together, I think it's the best of all worlds.
Very good. Good presentation. We don't have to make any action on this tonight. Thank you very much, both of you, for doing that. Just a couple of public statements is, I think there's a candidate forum tomorrow night at the North Dakota State School of Science, starting at 7:00, I think. We didn't have a lot of people at the Women League of Voters night. I just would hope if the public wants to hear from the candidates, please go to that. The flag radio should have it on the radio. Second item is, we normally do board of equalization at 7:30 in the morning. We're actually doing it at noon. So those of you that normally, we're used to getting up at 7:30 to talk about your taxes, equalization. It'll be at noon time tomorrow. Ben Hushka's team has gone through a variety of different people. So we don't have on our list a lot of people. But we have a lot of things that have been addressed already. And many of them saw decreased cost of their house, their assessments went down. Is there any other business or discussion? No birthdays, John?
No birthdays.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.